All right. We're going to get started. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you to the audience in the room. Just as a reminder, I'm Rich Mucci, Chair of the Select Board. We have a lot of people with us today. I appreciate everyone coming on this Friday cold morning to have our budget summit. We did this last year, and we've done them before on Zoom, on and off, since I've been on the board for the last couple of years. So I think it's good to bring everyone together, kind of get some questions answered, have the town manager give a presentation about budget outlooks. I know there's materials that have been passed out to all of you. So really, I'm going to turn this over to Beth, and she'll walk us through it. And Beth, I don't know how you want to proceed. Do you want people to ask questions as we go?
Sure. Yeah, I think it's so. Everybody should have gotten a copy of the presentation. Same presentation you got yesterday afternoon is what I'm going to give right now. The, there's a lot here, obviously. So I think it's just easier if we ask questions as we go along, as opposed to trying to wait till the end. So please just stop me as I go through. So the first, just topics to talk about today first up is just some historical data. So departmental turnbacks, free cash, operating reserves. Then going through kind of where we are right now with the FY '25 budget. So it's still early times. We just, you know, went through with our department heads right before the holidays, all their municipal requests. So we've made, working with Mark and Stacy, we've made some revenue assumptions. We have some projected expenses. I just will say that these are still work in progress on the municipal side. We're still working through with some departments, some questions that we have. And then kind of looking at where we stand right now. And then, obviously, a lot of what we've been talking about over the past few months are our capital needs. So that kind of has to play into the overall kind of budget picture. So, you know, where we are in terms of project needs for capital, existing and proposed debt, and then what are our funding options for possible capital. Any questions on any of that before I get started? I'm going to run very quickly through the historical data. This is a lot of what you've seen before. I've just updated it with the new FY '23 information. So the FY '20 and '21 are circled in red because those were the COVID years where I wasn't involved in those budgets, but they were, there was some pretty conservative assumptions made in terms of revenue and other items in those, in those budget years. And then, looking into '23, we had a turnback of about 3.3 million. Over 1.2 of that was related to health insurance. So as you may recall, we made a switch from Harvard Pilgrim to Blue Cross Blue Shields, which actually resulted in a decrease in our FY '23 budget, which is what that large turnback was. So any questions on that slide before I move forward? So this is our free cash and retained earning trends over the past few years. You know, as we all know, we ended FY '23 with about $20 million in free cash. We used about $750,000 of that at Fall Town Meeting. So we're a little bit, a little bit above $19 million. Free cash historical usage. So this is a slide that we put together last year, and I just updated it for '23. This, what's shown in blue is the historical use of free cash to balance the next year's operating budget. So, you know, in FY '10, we used $2.2 million to balance the FY '11 operating budget. The other items include one-time uses. They also include supplemental operating budget. I didn't include that in the kind of operating budget because it was really looking at what we used to balance the next year's budget. So just to give some idea, obviously, last year, we had a very small use of free cash to balance the FY '24 budget. And then FY '19, '20, and '21, that was right after we had the last operating override, which is why those numbers are so low. Okay. And then historical operating reserves. So as you all know, our current operating reserve policy is in the 6% to 10% range. We've discussed in the past, based on the conversations we had with Moody's last year when our rating was put under review, whether we wanted to increase that at some point. You know, we had kind of thrown around the 8% to 12% or 10% to 14%. I think the feedback we got from our financial advisors was, don't make promises that you can't keep. So if we are considering an increased that policy, it might be something that we talk about if and when we have another operating override. And then, we ended FY '23 at just about 18.6% operating reserve, obviously, with the use of free cash at Fall Town Meeting. And that's a, Stacy will tell you that number is, changes. The operating reserve calculation has, has a lot of moving pieces to it.
There's 50 different assumptions that go into it. So this never, we're never going to hit it, and it's best to be conservative.
It's a snapshot in time, obviously, when we closed FY '23, and it's a moving target from, from there forward. That's all I had in terms of the historical data. Any questions on any of that before I get into '25?
Questions, Jimmy?
Yep.
You touched the bond reading, the bond reading policy. You did not touch on the capital discussion, Chapter 90. Why, you realize it's a sacred cow among the town management. I think that's something that should be considered in the long-term decision-making process.
Sure. So we get about half a million dollars in Chapter 90 money every year. My understanding was that several years ago, DPW did a, did some sort of survey, and they felt they needed somewhere around $1 million to maintain our roads and sidewalks in a state of good repair, which is why capital usually augments that every year.
Include it in your capital discussion.
Sure. Yep. So going into FY '25. So this is a table, for those who are around, last year, we had a similar table talking about our local receipts. So this is the average, not including the FY '20 and '21, because those were kind of peak COVID years. This is FY '23 actual. This is the FY '24 budget model. So that's what we assumed when we did the model last year. This is the '24 recap number, and these are our current assumptions. So between the FY '24 budget model and the FY '25 budget model, we've increased it, you know, somewhere around $400,000. One of the things we increased is the transportation fees. So we did just in, increase the, we, we added the capital fee, and then we increased the, the scale house fees for commercial and also the sticker fee for residential. So that, that number's a little bit higher than we were, where we were in '24. Everything else, you know, we kept it, you know, within reason. We kind of, Mark and Stacy and I kind of went through and looked at these numbers. So I don't know if there's any, if anybody has any specific questions or concerns about any of those.
It might just be helpful for Stacy to talk about, you know, because in previous years, we've said, why can't we increase a certain line item? I don't know, you can pick up more vehicle excise tax or whatever. You know, there's budgetary reasons why we only swing a certain amount. Could you just talk about that?
Yeah, sure. When we do the tax recap, the DOR is very specific about not overestimating your local receipts just to balance the budget. And so they have a cap on what you can actually increase. For, for instance, let's look at motor vehicle. We budgeted $4 million, but we can't budget $4 million because we only collected 3.9 in the previous year. So we had to bring that number down. And then other meals tax, 262, we budgeted 240. We left it the same because we budgeted 240. Penalties and interest, we were able to go above what we actually collected in FY '23 because we collected 320 in '24 already. So there's certain things that we can adjust, but there's caps that the DOR has. The 320, we had a deferral payment come in and pay penalties and interest above and beyond what our budget was. So we were able to bring that number up because realistically, we've collected it. So we should be able to appropriate it. And then, as you go down the list, there's certain things like interest. We collected 9 million in interest. DOR would let us budget nine, I mean, not 9 million, sorry, 900,000. That would solve a lot of problems.
All solved, yeah, all right.
Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Reasonably, that we had an un, an un, I guess, fathomed year with interest. So we could budget up to what we collected. We collected $300,000 up till the time I was doing the recap. So I was able to budget that for FY '24. We don't want to budget 900,000 because we're not, who knows what's going to happen? We have some lynch money sitting around still. We're spending that down, so we don't really, we're not going to have the same cash flow as we did when we collected the money. We budgeted 100,000 because interest is very volatile and it's very dependent upon the market. So you have to, you can't budget too high for that. So there are certain adjustments that we have to make once FY '23 closed. We look at, okay, where did we land? And what's the DOR going to let us budget based on what we actually propose? And so that's why they're different, and they're always different. Every year, we balance it, and the new growth is kind of part of that equation. The new growth came like right on with a mil, with a million dollars. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that.
Yes.
Yeah, that's like the next slide.
Actually, I actually have one question on building permits, because that's down, you know, the recap and the budget model, 170,000. Is that just building permits in Q, new development that's known?
Yeah, so there's not, you know, we had this big kind of, with the 240B projects that came on my, a couple other, not, not the same scale, but other larger developments. And in speaking with the assessor, there's just not that same number of projects in the pipeline that we expect to come through. And so we did scale down what our building permit fees are. And we also, on, on the next side, we scaled down what we think our new growth is going to be based on speaking with the assessor. So. Any other questions on?
Sounds great, thank you. First, Stacy.
Okay. So, you know, starting at the top, property tax, obviously grows by 2.5%, plus the FY '23 new growth. New growth in '23, the actual was almost 1.3 million. In FY '24, we budgeted a million. And like I just said in talking with the assessor, he recommended we budget 800,000 for FY '25.
And the new growth for '24 came in at 1,041,000 or something like that, 41,000. So it was right on. But it was, I was a little bit worried, which is why we had that. We had added an extra article at Fall Town Meeting to balance it in case we were too high.
So total property tax, tax levy growth is just around 2.66 million. State aid, we budgeted at a 2.5% growth rate from FY '24 actual. And then we subtracted the, Stacy, you want to talk about the cherry sheet offset that we have?
Oh, yeah, there's a, in the, in the actuals for FY '23, we don't include, there's something called cherry sheet offsets in the revenue. I don't know why the DOR puts this on the cherry sheet. It's not general fund revenue. So we always budget the gross, but we get the net in the general fund. So the FY '23 actual is the net, and then the FY '24 budget is the gross. That's why it looks like it's growing 2.94%. But it's really, it's like 50 grand. It's not a big number, but it, I don't know why they even put it on there, saying that it's going to be general fund revenue, because it's not. We have an appropriation to offset it on the expense side.
So as Jeff knows, the cherry sheet number is a moving target. So, you know, the governor's budget will come out mid-January, and then I get it refined right up to the last second. So we'll, we'll have this, we'll have a different number by the time we get to town meeting with the FinCom's budget. But this is kind of the assumption now. Local receipts is that 10.7 million that we just talked about. Stacy, I don't know if you want to talk about these next kind of three items?
Yeah, the building stabilization fund and the capital stabilization fund. These transfers cover the debt that has been dedicated to be funded by those funding sources. Other transfers in, those include like the parking meter fund that funds our budget, the cap, the cemetery perpetual care that funds the budget. But it also includes the building and stabilization funds that pay for all the capital, like on the yellow, the second page of the yellow sheet has a bunch of capital projects. And then we had a bunch of capital at the Fall Town Meeting. All of those capital are in there as well, because that's part of the general fund budget when little projects are funded by those funds. So that's what that line is. I believe that's what that is, right, Beth?
And it looks like that the building and capital stabilization fund transfers and debt service is going down by almost $200,000 if I look at budget.
Yeah, the, the building especially. I think the capital is probably a little more level.
Okay.
Because the capital's paying for some of the newer things. We haven't added anything from the building, I don't think, recently, have we?
No.
Yeah.
Do you know, does that include an estimate of the Lynch traffic projects that are coming up? Because that's 400,000 that's going to go up.
I don't think any of these numbers include debt that we haven't issued yet. Is that correct?
Nothing so far.
Not the transfers in, anyway, no.
So the one thing I want to mention at the bottom here is overlay funds. So the past few years, we hadn't had anything. And then I think there's been maybe a little bit of catch-up, where we now have somewhere around $960,000 that we expect to be available. And overlay funds to be transferred to overlay surplus pending a vote of the Board of Assessors. So that's money that could be used towards operating or capital expenses. And I think is, should be part of our conversation in terms of, you know, if we use it towards, towards operating, it, you know, we would, we would be able to reduce, if we need to use free cash to put towards, to close a gap in the FY '25 budget, we could use overlay funds to cover, you know, all our portion of that.
And just so you know what this is, every year, we budget an allowance for abatements. Overlay, it's kind of the same interchangeable. We budget like 400-ish thousand dollars every year to cover any abatements that come in. And our abatements have averaged around, I think, 150 to 200 every year. So until we have receivables that are a lower amount and we lean our real estate taxes, we have to hold this overlay until we have leaned our, our real estate taxes. So once we do that, we see what we have for receivables. Whatever is in excess of our receivable balances in any appellate tax board cases, we can release it. That's been a couple of years. We did a couple liens. I think the collector caught up after a couple of years. That's why it's accumulated to 960.
Any questions on any of this? So projected expenses. And as I mentioned, you know, on the municipal side, we're still, we kind of wrapped up our initial budget conversations with department heads right before the holidays, and we're still kind of working with everybody to go through some of the numbers. So these numbers should, you know, should be considered approximate at this point. What these numbers do include are three new staff requests. So there is a request from the planning board to fund a new assistant planner position. This is not the first year we've gotten that request. They've budgeted somewhere around $70,000 in FY '25 for that position. The next one is in the fire department, a deputy chief position that was created by the former town manager on the compensation schedule and was part of the prior, previous contract negotiations. We've never actually funded that position, and it's certainly something the fire department has requested, at least for the past three years.
Are captains, or is that leave, that an extra personnel?
I, yeah, that was the intent.
It's additional.
Right. And then finally, in the DPW, they've requested a new maintenance person, similar to that was created at the high school. If anybody knows Chris Conway, who is, who has that position over at the high school, for when the new Lynch School comes on board. And I know, Michelle, you asked about kind of the timing of that, which is the same question I had when I met with them. Would they really want this person to come on board during the construction so that they can be part of the, you know, the commissioning process and kind of building closeout process for the school? So they understand the systems from the ground up, as opposed to coming into a kind of constructed building that then they have to kind of figure out? So.
So the hiring could be mid-year, though?
Hiring could be.
There's more to see.
Right. It could be September, it could be December. Right. So it's possible that that, you know, we could reduce that number by, by some amount. Also, I wanted to mention a few other things that we included in the DPW budget this year. So they previously didn't have, although it was kind of accounted for in other items, they didn't have a line item for playground maintenance. And obviously, that kind of came to a head this year. So I had them specifically pull that out, and they added some additional funds for inspections, for making sure that we're maintaining the playground mulch at the adequate, adequate levels, some money for replacing equipment and other things. So they've budgeted about $47,000. This is a new line item in FY '25 for playground maintenance. Also, they've included funding for the VFA software and for an annual maintenance, which is around 15, the maintenance is around $15,000. So that's new for FY '25 as well. And then we have a sprinkler inspections that required, and we're kind of on this, I think they do them every year, but every five years, there's a larger inspection required. So there's a, some additional funding budgeted for that in their, in their budget. So then we've, we've, for, for non-union municipal employees, we've budgeted a 2.5% COLA. And then we have not settled with our police patrol unit. That has gone into mediation. We actually have our first session next week with them. So we've included money for expected patrol salary increases. It was a three-year contract starting in FY '23, so this is accumulative from '23, '24, and then into '25. School department, obviously, you guys have a few more weeks to work out your numbers, so I don't have anything plugged in there for now. Vocational, we've budgeted, based on our historic average, a 5% increase. But I'd like to work a little bit probably with Andrew and Frank to see if we can firm up that number before February 15th. There is some debt coming on for the Northeast Metro Tech. I think it's around 30,025 is going to be our, our share. So they did a, or they're in the middle of a school, school building project. So that debt is going to ramp up over the next few years. Energy budget has gone down a little bit, and there's obviously some unknowns here. So we've taken, we've taken most of the Lynch School off. We did, we are carrying a little bit of money just for some unknowns in terms of electricity over there as kind of a buffer. The biggest unknown is the heating at the Parker School. Obviously, we'll, we'll know more with the, with the new modules out there. We've, we've carried, I think, a little bit of a buffer. And so probably by the time we get to FinCom, you know, we'll be through most of the current year heating season, and so we'll be able to refine those numbers a little bit more for the Parker's heating number. But we are showing a slight decrease from, from FY '24. The big one here is health insurance. So, you know, for FY '23, we switched from Maya to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we had a significant decrease. That was that, you know, 1.2%, $2 million turnback we had in the health insurance budget. For FY '24, when we, when we joined the Maya Collaborative, they held our, we were held to the Maya average. So I think we had, what, like a 3% increase for '24? And now we're seeing, they're projecting an 8% increase in health insurance premiums going into FY '24. I don't think that's uncommon. I think across the board, health insurance companies are kind of seeing, and other municipalities are seeing that increase. Everybody's kind of recovering from COVID and seeing larger, you know, loss ratios and everything. So we'll have a better number in late January when they, when Maya releases, officially releases their numbers. But that's the number they've told us to budget for at this point. Our contributory retirement, this is a, you know, required per PARAC. Medicare workers' comp unemployment, we're estimating a 5, about 5.6% increase based on historical averages. General insurance, environmental remediation. So Maya's projecting, Maya's also our insurance company. They're projecting a 10% increase on insurance premiums. We had a meeting with them late last year, so we've budgeted that in here. Reserve funds, 400,000. Our annual $350,000 transferred to OPEB. And then debt service, which I just wanted to mention here, we still have the carrying costs for the Washington Swan Street project, which we're estimated a ban payment of $250,000 in March of 2025. We're assuming we're going to renew that ban in March of this year, so.
And that includes a couple of estimates, but we're truing up a few other estimates for other projects. It's not, that's not going to be final. We have some changes to make.
So that's where we are, kind of on the expense side for the moment. Any questions? I think for the board, at least, the, the feedback I'm looking to get some direction on from you are the three new positions. I think from my perspective, seeing how challenging it was this past year without a planner, I would like to keep the funding in there for the assistant planner position. Also, I think it's important that we fund the school maintenance, the Lynch School maintenance person. And to Michelle's point, maybe we can reduce that a little bit to bring them in, you know, towards the fall or mid-year. The deputy fire chief is obviously something that the department has, you know, was part of prior contract negotiations and something the department has been requesting, certainly ever since I've been here. So, you know, it's definitely something I'd like to hear some feedback from the board on in those going forward.
So I think what we'll do is we'll go through the presentation today, and then maybe Monday, it's on our agenda. We can certainly discuss your questions, Beth, at the table.
And I think just as, I know the next slide sort of looks at this whole thing compared to what some potential future, you know, growth is or asks from the school department. But I just did the math this morning. Those municipal adds for the net side of the municipal budget is a 1% addition. So just for perspective, right, $300,000 equals 1% growth. And we're looking at school growth of, you know, 3% or something, we don't yet know. So just for some perspective, it's percentage-wise, it's pretty modest growth. And I agree, let's take it up on Monday, but I just wanted to sort of put that in context.
Thank you.
Anything else on expenses?
Let's hope Maya has good news.
I know.
Or worse news.
I know. I mean, I think.
They're usually pretty conservative in their.
Yeah. And I mean, I think overall, you know, with the change and the decrease, we're still in a good posit, like, oh, if you average it over whatever the three years, because we had such a significant decrease, we're still in a, a good place. We're, we're better than we would have been had we stayed with Harvard. So it's just a one-year jump. So without having a, a school number, I just made some assumptions of a 3, 3.5, 4. And then 4.84 was basically the historic growth rate. So I, you know, we, working with our budget model, we kind of plugged in the numbers and, and plugged in some assumptions with the school. And so this is kind of where we are. The first section includes those three new municipal requests, which is somewhere around 310,000. You know, we're somewhere, if you kind of look at the historic, we're probably around 2.4% gap between expenses and revenues. And then obviously, if you remove those municipal staff requests, you're, you're closer to 2.1. The real, you know, struggle comes as we get into the out-years, FY '26, '27, and obviously '28. Those are big numbers. And so we're obviously going to do, on the municipal side, what we can to refine those numbers and bring them down a bit. And then we'll have the school number, you know, as we get towards the end of January. I don't know if you guys have a kind of a timeline where you're. Yeah. So any questions on this?
I would ask Jeff, I know you don't speak for all of FinCom, but I know it's early because you need the town manager's budget in February. But are these numbers, at least, you know, if, we'll take out the adds if we just look to the bottom half, no new municipal adds, are those sort of gaps and deficits sort of lining up with where you all think we're coming in this budget season? To the deficits of just straight, you know, gaps of what we have from taxes and some anticipated expense side?
That number is bigger than I thought it was going to be. So that's sort of my gut reaction of there's work to do here. So I don't, yeah, like you said, I'm just going to be on behalf of everybody, but that 2.1 number, you know, without the new adds, is a big nut to crack. So, yeah.
And, yeah, so maybe, and, you know, we know it's insurance and some other things that are probably baked, even with taking any ads. Okay. So that's a good, I don't know when your meeting next, but you can.
Yeah.
I mean, you've got the slide, right, with sort of Beth and Stacy's assumptions on what we think our expenses are and salaries and insurance and everything else. So something to share, I guess?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I would imagine it's a little bit bigger, because I don't know that we all know where we're going to land until we see premiums and everything else.
I mean, I do think the good news is with the overlay money, which, you know, is obviously something larger than we, I think, even, even if we thought we were going to get some money, I think it's bigger than we thought it was going to be. So that would allow us to not use free cash, right?
Yeah.
If we used all of that towards operating.
Like we mentioned, we had the three objectives for this year, strive to deliver a balanced budget, emphasis on strive, the triple A bond rating, and then the capital process. So they see that, you know, the operating side is 2.1 million, and also we have the capital discussion. So it's the two major topics.
And what, do we think, this is maybe a question for like Mike Day and Jason Moore here, but with the new tax on incomes over $1 million, you know, go half to education, half to infrastructure. Do we know if that's just going to be in the governor's budget? Any of that infrastructure way, which maybe is Chapter 90? I mean, it may not be like.
Yeah, we actually just.
But it's certainly not a roof.
We got a letter right before the holidays from the governor. We are getting another, I think, $250,000 in Chapter 90 money, which is good news. And to your point, Jimmy. So I don't know if that's a one-time thing, or if that's, if that's going to be.
Is that the first installment of money or something?
If that's going to be, you know, baked into future, future Chapter 90 money. But that's, I think we get, something we can ask our state delegation. But that's, I think, we get something we can ask our state delegation.
And what about education? What do we know about that millionaire's tax and how that's going to flow to education?
They'll put it through the Chapter 70. So we'll get our proportional share, which is not a lot.
Yep, okay.
So that's all I had on the budget. Any questions on that before we get into capital? So the first few slides are are the same slides I presented back in October when the board had our first kind of major capital conversation. And these, obviously, this was put together before Fall Town Meeting, so there was a slight reduction in terms of what was funded through the capital stabilization funds. The board did vote to fund the it was the Everett Ave Culver project, which we voted you voted to fund using ARPA funds instead of the stabilization funds. So these, when I say FY '25 funded, these are projects that were submitted by departments in July of '23 and either had funding approved at Fall Town Meeting or will have funding going to Spring Town Meeting. So that's what that that denotes. And then the unfunded FY '25 are the ones that were not able to be funded through the stabilization funds. So those are requests that came in from department heads that that have no home as of yet to be funded. And then obviously, as we get out into the future years, we have some larger requests as, you know, Town Hall HVAC, and we'll get into those details, but.
Beth, sorry.
Yes.
Going back to that slide, the FY '26 request includes the FY '25 unfunded.
I don't believe so.
So that's just like new.
Those are new request, yeah, and I apologize, it's been a while since I put this together.
Total is not cumulative.
So again, this slide and the next two are ones that we put together last October showing those requests, showing what the existing debt service is. This is the building stabilization funds. Capital has a guideline that they will not borrow above 50% of the annual inflows. So this is that purple line, which we're calling kind of maximum debt service. And then these are the the green shows the funds available for use above the debt service. So this is building and this is the capital. And then this is, again, the same slide I showed last October. The assumption is that for a million dollars a borrowing at 20 for 20 years, that 5% would be about $80,000 a year in debt service. I know, Michelle, you asked about kind of the interest rate. So this 5%, you know, we put together last fall, probably September timeframe with Hilltop, our financial advisors. And some of the newer numbers that we got this week, they were using a 3.75% interest rate. And I think that just reflects maybe a little bit of optimism on their side in terms of where things are headed. And also where.
That's my question, I was like, what's the 3% anywhere?
Where they've seen recent borrowings come in. I think things have been better than they.
Recent numbers.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's all a guess, right, until we actually go to market to borrow and anything. But those are kind of where they where they landed. And I'll just say that, you know, this, you know, we had met last fall about these numbers. And so this is it's worth another conversation to make sure that these numbers are kind of where where we all agree to in terms of available bonding capacity and other.
And the bonding capacity relative to that $80,000 a year in debts are like, that's this is a stupid question. But is that the same thing, right? So we have out of these funds, we can pay $836,000 in debt service? Is that right?
If you went to the maximum of their guidelines, right? I don't know that you ever would go to the maximum.
That's how we got ourselves in this problem to begin with. I don't think you're going to see any support for suddenly taking on that level of debt again in the near term.
Okay, so let me just try to understand it then differently. So if if I read from the bottom up, $80,000 a year pays for a million dollars of borrowing at 5% or 3 and a half or X number. So $80,000 a year, you could get nine if if we used all the 836 or the 751, which we're not. But I want to understand what what actually is available then relative to guidelines? But if I took the 751 number, because I was playing with some numbers last night, that would let you borrow $9 million at $80,000 in debt service, right?
So that's available for debt service, not available bonding capacity?
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand the difference between what is bonding capacity and debt service? How are those two related? Because the slide has them on the same slide, so.
Well, the question is, is available bonding capacity, is that actually all we the gross amount we can bond? Or is that funds available to service debt?
That's only the capital stabilization cap. They're capping at 50% of the available funds. So we, as a town, can borrow more, but this is what these funds will pay for.
But the available bonding capacity, is that are those funds available for debt service?
That's what it seems like.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's the question. It's a digital answer, yes or no.
Let's talk about capital, look at the capital stabilization fund for a moment. So in FY '26, the inflows are around $3.68 million, right? We have existing debt service of around $1 million that we're paying on that. The maximum debt service, if you say that's 50% of the inflows, is around 1.8.
Okay, so there's the answer.
So but but you have $1 million in debt service that you're already servicing. So you have, if you went to that maximum 50%, right, you'd have another eight, say, $800,000 in '26. Does that make sense?
Yes, you were using '26, right?
I was using '26, yeah.
Which is, I'm not going to get a look.
It doesn't take into consideration other projects that you want to fund with this way.
Exactly.
It's just what's available.
You're making a true statement. A true statement. There are lots of implications to that statement.
Yes, right, obviously. Then we get to the point where we can't fund any other projects, right, coming in.
Well, I get that. So within your guidelines of what's so if 836 is not what's truly available from a, you know, in 751 is not what's truly available due to comfort level, not trying to bankrupt the funds, what is the available? Is it half that? Is it not 836, it's for 18?
It depends on what you want to accomplish with the funds. Do you want to do you want to bond these things out and accomplish the few big projects that are out there? Or do you want to look at the funds as being realistically ongoing projects of a smaller nature? If you're sitting there saying like, the funds can take on three or four projects a year that are in the half a million dollar size, and we routinely see those, you're not going to use a bunch of this money for bonding big projects. You're going to sit there and they just aren't structured to do that. We can get ourselves back to where we were at the beginning of the 2000s and bond these things out, and we'll all be gone. 20 years from now, people are going to go, what a bunch of idiots, you know, why did they do that?
I think it's important also to look at the past. We made decisions based upon probably very quick decisions and not looking out when we did the McCall addition. And I believe it was Ambrose or Lynch.
Ambrose.
Ambrose, we still owe money on a project on a building that was knocked down. So one of the things I believe the capital feels very confident in, in that we want to be a little we want to be able basically to do projects within that million-dollar scope going out over the next five years. If you decide to bond heavily, those million-dollar projects aren't going to get done. And then they're going to have a compound effect on the back end. I mean, if we don't do it this year, we add it to next year, that keeps compounding. What the thought of the capital committee was in initially requesting additional funding is to use this basically as a catch-up, a project that are basically over $1 million that would allow us to get caught up and allow us to continue a capital process going forward with the present funding we have. Now, we've gone to various boards and we requested three, four, five million, $3 million. One year we did a comprehensive report, then we needed about $3 million to try to get some of these projects done. We don't, we haven't got it, we understand that. But the project is that its own fens are only going by 2 and a half percent and that the cost of construction and interest have exceeded that to an accuracy.
Jimmy and Roger, who sets the guidelines?
We do internally.
Internally?
Yeah.
Okay, and have those been revisited in the last, I mean, hearing you today, it sounds like, you know.
We just established them two years ago.
Okay.
Because we were looking at people wanting to bond and bond and bond against, you know, every time it comes up, it's like, well, bond against the stabilization fund, it's like, like, we can't do that, you know? And thea's question earlier was very insightful in that all of these projects, you saw the the things that aren't funded. Couple of years ago, we did a study or we did an analysis where we go, okay, everything that gets deferred, it just moves off to the right. Now, what happens, you know, that those projects just keep stacking up. We get to $50 million of backlog in no time at all, just because the the requests every year exceed the demands. They don't go, the projects don't go away, they just move to the right and accelerate the cost. So these these stabilization funds are not built and never have been built to take on multimillion-dollar projects. They just aren't. I think that part of this pain is conflating repairs and maintenance with actual capital expense. Like, if you look at this list, we're doing both repairs, big construction. So I think best practice would be point and a half on asset value into a deferred maintenance account. And that sort of handles your repairs and maintenance. And then we could talk about large-scale capital projects and how to fund them on a project-by-project basis strategically.
So maybe going through this list might help kind of talk about where what we what we think we could use as stabilization funds for in the next few years. So this is a list that we've kind of been working on since the fall with staff and a variety of other, you know, capital committee folks. So the items in green here are the ones that we've discussed kind of for consideration as part of a possible override. So Town Hall HVAC, HVAC upgrades to this building are of such a magnitude financially that they require they trigger ADA compliance regulations. So it's kind of a package deal. We're estimating that work at around $8 million. The HVAC design is complete, we're underway with the ADA design. I don't think that's a project that could ever be funded through the stabilization funds. And it's certainly something that the capital committees, you know, come to the board a few times, kind of highlighting as a as a need. The the three roof projects, something that we've we've talked about quite a bit and has been funded at town meeting. So library slate roof replacement, that's estimated around $3 million. There's a design was funded at Fall Town Meeting, that work is kind of is ongoing right now. So we should have some better cost estimates there. Ambrose School Roof Phase 1 is estimated around $800,000. McCall School Roof Phase 1 estimated around $3 million. Each of these buildings have additional roof work in in out years. This is just the first phase of improvements at those buildings. So as we look towards, you know, needs, future needs of of those capital funds, we're going to be back with those roof, Phase 2 of those roof repairs at all of those buildings. Town Hall Bell Tower Structural Review, this is something that was funded at Fall Town Meeting. This $2 million, that's just a guess at this point. We don't, you know, we have no kind of structural, we're just starting that process. So of of these projects, that's probably one of the ones with the biggest kind of unknown in terms of where we are cost-wise. Library window replacement, this is Phase 1 as well, estimated around $960,000. We did just issue an RFP, and we're putting together a designer selection committee to select a consultant this month for that work, as well as a Town Hall window repair or replacement. So Town Hall windows are not quite as in bad shape as the ones in the library, but they are certainly not in great shape. And so part of the conversation there is determining whether there's repairs that can be made there or whether a full replacement would make sense. What we've heard from our facilities department is that those windows, they can't find replacement parts. They're they're so old that they can't service them well at this point. Lincoln School Chiller is a project that's, from my understanding, been kind of out there in a priority from capital for a while. The design was funded, the final phase of design, I think there's some preliminary design that was done, but the final phase was funded at Fall Town Meeting. Lincoln School Flatwork, again, that's a project that's been kind of a priority floating around capital for a while. Winchester High School Gym Floor, I think that's at least maybe for the capital cycle, a newer priority, but certainly something that I've heard a lot about over the past few months in terms of being a real safety need for our for our students. And then the Packer Ellis Tennis Courts. So we did fund some preliminary design at Fall Town Meeting, and we are getting, we're working, we're going to be working with Chris Huntress, who we do a lot of our recreation projects, and also VHB, because there's some floodplain issues out there and structural issues out there. So we're going to be getting them under contract hopefully this month. And obviously, before the next capital cycle, we'll have a better idea. So those were kind of the ones that we identified as priorities, top priorities for a potential override that override, you know, those numbers, knowing that some of those are estimates, are come up to somewhere around $27 million. One of the ones that I just highlighted as a as a possibility for conversation, so we have a half a million dollar earmark that we got to look at some traffic calming, pedestrian improvements in the town center. Part of that is a project to expand the sidewalk from what it is today to about a 16-foot width. It allows us to keep parking on both sides, but would allow us to have outdoor dining within that sidewalk space. So it's something, you know, this board's heard a lot about. Obviously, outdoor dining is is something that we all enjoy, but it does have an impact on our businesses in terms of lots of parking. So it would be a great project to be able to be able to move forward. We, like I said, we do have the money for for to get us through the final design, through that earmark. And then the Mystic School Heating System is one, I know it's it's kind of been on the capital list, and I think there was some deferred, there was some maintenance money that went towards some boiler improvements. But this year has really been really trying for that building. Our our staff are consistently working in, you know, 40-degree temperatures in the morning, getting their classrooms ready. So this is one that I had potentially flagged for for ARPA, just given the the timeline and the the needs there. And then one of the kind of question marks is the, as Chris Nixon presented at Fall Town Meeting, the unknowns related to the concrete repair, floor repairs at the Winchester High School that, you know, we plugged in a $2 million number there, but I don't think there's any any update on kind of where that is. So that's obviously a question mark for now. So kind of looking at the overall project list, those are the ones that we kind of pushed to the top. And then we we tried to identify the ones that we thought could be funded through the stabilization funds. And this is just, this is just looking at the 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 projects that were funded, unfunded need in '25, as well as the FY '26 request. This isn't, this isn't looking at, you know, what comes in '27, '28, and '29 and and forward. So Town Hall Slate Roof Repairs, that that's estimated around, you know, half a million, $600,000. We thought that was something that probably the stabilization funds could could support. Carrot House Roof Replacement, that's another priority that's unidentified. I don't know if that, you know, $300,000 number is a question mark. DBW Storage Structure, that's something that's been talked about for for a while and potentially could be done through the stabilization funds if it if there was if that project was borrowed. Town Hall Auditorium Floor Replacement and Mystic Window Mystic School Window Replacement. So those were kind of building stabilization fund projects. And then, and I won't go through all of these for the capital, but just highlighting a few. We know we're going to need some improvements to Shore Road Bridge, to the Everett Ave Culver. Mall and Field Playground is one that we have identified. And whether that ends up being capital stabilization or if we'll talk a little bit further about the CP and whether that ends up being a CP-eligible project. Game Field Pickleball, so there's a variety of traffic and water quality and recreation projects that are kind of identified as potential capital stabilization fund projects going forward. So obviously, the Shore Road Bridge and Everett Ave Culver, those are estimates at this point, and we'll refine those numbers over the next few months. So any questions on this, any of this list?
Can I just get one clarification? Point of information on the Lincoln Chiller. So I don't know that we're in the final stages of design. We, the school committee did request in support of Pete, $60,000 from Town Meeting, I think, three years ago, Roger, and Jimmy, maybe two or three years ago, for that conceptual work. A report was produced in the spring identifying four different options, two on the roof, two on the ground. I think Pete has a preference, you know, one of each, depending upon which direction he goes. And as Roger said at Town Meeting, the expectation is there's going to be a presentation of the school committee to understand what what this means and what the next steps are. So we should definitely be budgeting something, but my my recollection is there's a pretty significant cost swing in in those options, roof versus ground. So I think there's some next steps, but absolutely Town Meeting funded some design work for next steps. Just not sure where it's far along, it's maybe some people that we are on Town.
Okay, thank you.
I would point out just one other thing that that you want to hear. This is going to come back to you guys to make further decisions on what.
going to come back to you guys to make further decisions on what you want to do for, I'll bring it up again, Lynch Traffic. That's going to be something three, $400,000 that's in here coming out of the stabilization funds. So, I don't know where the design work stands, and when you're going to ultimately pick the package of things that you're going to do, what's going to happen.
Yeah, so, Tool is under contract, obviously moving forward the design. They presented some kind of preliminary just to the board last fall. They're going to have a series of neighborhood meetings, probably later this month and into February, and then they'll be back before the board, late February, March, to kind of get, pull together a final number, hopefully so we can go to springtime meeting with a, with a construction request, so that we can bid the project and hopefully get it done before school starts, get most of, as much as we can at least, um, before school starts.
So, that's likely, that project is likely going to span two fiscal years, given the timing?
Yeah, so if we, if we get money at springtime meeting, we'll have, the money would be available July 1, so we'd probably be able to bid it, you know, depending where they are with, with the design plans this spring, or bid it over the summer. And the idea would be to have all the construction complete before September 2025, when school's back at, at the Lynch site.
Right. So, Roger, so the $400,000 that was passed in January of '23 is currently in your fund and won't be expended until FY '26, it sounds like.
Correct. We spent that money this year, too.
Yep. So, we appropriated it.
We'll have, we'll have a ban. So, if we, if we, you know, issue, if we approve it for July 1st, we'll do, we'll do a, a ban, which will probably be two years. So, we'll have a ban payment. It won't be the full borrowing costs, but we will have a ban payment in '26.
So, we spent that money this year, but there was that whole weird thing going, that went on at town meeting about like the engineering costs, and $400,000 went out of this pocket, went back into that pocket real quick.
And I think just another question on this slide, so, you know, we, I thank you for the borrowing and debt service, like that was helpful conversation for me. Like, and I appreciate the guidelines, we don't want to just bond everything and leave yourself no money to make any repair or even any purchase of a vehicle. So, that was totally helpful. But I also heard you say, you know, the stabilization funds, you're trying to fund things in the $500,000 and below range.
That was a million.
Is a million?
Yeah.
Okay. So, DPW is 3 million, right? And Mystic School Windows 610 of just the buildings, of the four and a half of the building stabilization fund, there's a 3 million dollar project, there's a 600 and 500K. I understand the discussion on override is the things at the top, and we've heard, we've met plenty, we've heard a lot about the, you know, needs of some HVAC roof at the library. But that 4 million that's kind of below the line could pick off a roof, right? Could pick off all the library, or could pick off a piece of something else, and you wouldn't necessarily do DPW. So, I think it's, it's a prioritization exercise, and it's a prioritization exercise to decide to go out to voters and fund an override. But there's also $4 million committed to some other repairs that are here that maybe aren't as urgent as HVAC or the library.
So, I just want to clarify, these aren't committed, this was just kind of my list, right? There's a whole capital cycle, and by the time that they get to FY '26, they'll have...
It could be different.
They'll have new set of departmental requests, right? So, this is kind of where we, what we know right now, but we all know things change over the, you know, so.
Right. I think that might be part of the problem, how do we limit and minimize things changing with a well-developed strategy? Because I, I agree, there's no ROI column here, we're sort of treating everything the same, sort of 3 million for storage structure versus school roofs. So, how do we make sure we're not making them a mistake?
Yeah, I mean, to me, hearing this, you know, there seems to be a gap in, in how we, we really don't have a mechanism, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have a mechanism to fund major, anything over a million dollars. You know, Michelle, I get your point of a borrowing from the capital stabilization fund, building stabilization fund, but what they're saying is, you know, that's going to back up and prevent all these other little projects, and then those are going to grow. So...
What I also heard Jeff saying is there's no way to sort of prioritize urgency of these projects. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I mean, we are not capital planning, we are capital triage. That's what we do. You know, that's, it'd be lovely to be able to do some planning.
Like, some of these are wants, which of these are needs?
To be fair, there, I mean, capital goes through a ranking process, right? So, there is a prioritization process that happens.
Right. There's several school projects on this list that didn't reach our ranking process. So, how does that go back to the capital process and back to finance?
Like, what do you, which ones, Michelle?
Well, Mystic School Window Replacement, Mystic School Heating System, for example.
So, I'll just speak to the Mystic School Window Replacement. That was something that the board kind of initiated through ARPA because of the feedback that you got from...
But it's our benefit.
No, I understand, but because of the name, the impact you got from the neighbor, or the feedback you got from the neighbors when we were doing that.
Well, so that goes back to what Jeff is asking. Are we taking feedback from the neighbors, or are we ranking based on need?
Well, I, and just the Mystic School Heating System, I think, my, my understanding is there is a significant need right now. That building is very cold.
With regard to buildings in particular, and school buildings in particular, we get sources that come in from multiple directions. We get facilities saying, this needs to happen. We get schools saying, we'd like this to happen. So, there's a disconnect there, and then also, you know, there are just things that come in from the outside, where the select board says, we've got to do something over there. You know, and, and they're basing it on feedback that they're getting from the community, so...
I don't know if, yeah, Michelle, I don't know if you guys are privy to the emails that have been going back and forth with Pete and the management about the, let me only just speak to the Mystic Heating System. I mean, you know, it's 40 degrees there in the morning, you know, they, I think they've got...
My design, Rich.
By what?
We turn the heat down number nine.
To that low?
Well, I'll just say, I don't, I don't, I mean, I've, you know, been in this role for two years now. I've never heard this level of complaint about the heat, and maybe your point is well taken, that that's how the building is run, but I've never heard before now that we're getting, you know, that staff are working in those conditions, and we're getting staff complaints, and they're, DPW is out there...
My point is, this is just an example, Beth, to go back to what Jeff was asking. Like, how are we ranking based on?
Yes, is it, is it really data-driven? I think VFA can help us with that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think there is a, there is a ranking process, right? When capital goes through.
I wouldn't say that's sort of data-driven. I think it's a little subjective, to be honest. Like, people are ranking things one to 10.
Yeah, there's no question the VFA investment's going to help us over time.
Yeah, oh, yeah, so, two, two different things, how we solve for now, but how do we make sure we're not hurting the future, putting ourselves in success over time.
Right.
May I, may I just add a comment, Rich, that may be helpful from a historical perspective? When it comes to school stuff, for many years, the school, the, the school committee and administration would sort of jointly advocate for things with Pete on behalf of DPW. I asked Jimmy and Roger to step in by Mystic this, and actually became problematic, because we found we had projects that had basically two cheerleaders, whereas for any other department head, there's one. So, we pivoted some years ago, really through request of the management and capital, so the school committee could focus more on kind of program-driven things, or major, major multi-billion dollar projects, for which we need, let's say, some political capital. And then Pete and DPW could focus more on the maintenance, renewal, and replacement stuff, and that's been a pivot within the past, like, three years. And I know Beth and Rich, you guys got copied on our capital memo, I think we're clear about what the school committee and administration prioritizes. In the same memo, we're saying pretty clearly what we understand DPW's priorities are. So, we're, we're hard to try to have an awareness of what those priorities are without kind of stepping into that lane and telling Pete, you know, how to do his job. So, for instance, Mystic Heat was Pete's priority number five out of, like, the 18th this cycle, and that was just for design, that was $150,000. So, the school committee is absolutely aware of the history on Mystic, and many other building maintenance issues, but we, we try to sort of respect each other's lanes and be understanding where... Is that fair, Roger? Did it?
Yeah. So, I'm curious, Jeff, because obviously, a decision to put an override question on the ballot for March, for November, for whatever, rest with the select board. But I'm curious, and I appreciate the data-driven, and VFA can help, and we're going to invest in VFA, and that's in the budget. I'm just curious from you as Jeff, who has a real interest in capital or FinCon, what solutions do you have? Say, do you have anything up your sleeve for, BFA solves the long-term planning, it helps, doesn't solve the long-term planning, but helps provide a data-driven approach to capital, but it doesn't address our current needs? I'm curious if you have any thoughts on current needs, if the committee does. So, I feel like this is the forum, or we need to invite FinCon to a future select board meeting, but do we have anything up our sleeves that we're not thinking about, that we should be?
It's a, it's a good question. It's almost, can we argue against gravity? No, like, we're already here, so I think we have to solve this problem, but also make it a condition of what are we going to do in the future? So, say Lynch, $90 million project, 1.5%, $1.3 million, we should be dumping that into a deferred maintenance account every year. Are we willing to do that? Are we willing to pivot into the right direction of best practices, or else we're going to be talking about this every five to 10 years? And I think that's where you're going to get people of, what's changing outside of the override that's going to avoid this problem in the future? If nothing, then you're probably going to get a lot of pushback. If there's something material and it makes sense, maybe you can show the strategy and pivot.
That's helpful. I was hoping you had a better silver bullet there, but I'll take, I'll take what you got. That's, that's something. Thank you.
And also, I would say, can we really go through this line and say, what is a need versus what is a want? So, $300,000 for a carriage house, what's the strategy there? We put a roof on, so what? Versus everything else, are we, are we actually experiencing any pain right now to show people we're actually putting a lens on this versus not just solving it now and kicking the can?
So, I just want to be clear in terms of the projects that are in blue, right? The building stabilization, the capital stabilization. Those are just projects that were identified during the FY '25 and FY '26. And, and all I did was say, not that they should be funded in the next cycle, but they could be funded. Like, the stabilization funds could support those projects. That's not a prioritized list, it was just to, to pull those projects that needed to go up to the top, right? That, the rest of that is not a want, like, it wasn't a want versus need, it's something that the stabilization, the committee could consider for funding through the stabilization, size-wise in the future. It's not, this is what they will be funding, or what we should be funding.
Yeah, I know we have the five-year plan coming on the 15th, and we sort of have to still work through this, but you know, if we didn't show that lens, like, we're really...
Yeah, and I think it's fair, since you brought up the five-year plan, obviously, the, the board is having a lot of conversations about the possibility of an override. So, the 15th may be a little bit premature to put a final plan together, right? Because there's conversations about maybe some of these projects being pulled out and funded through an override. So, I mean, I, I will put something together, but there'll, there's going to be some question marks in terms of what's funded and how they're funded.
I think that's the, the simple that we all work together, try to solve for, like, solve the now, but what's going to change in the future? How do we structurally change things to separate repairs and maintenance, and then big capital projects? And are willing to do something.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, we can, we can do our best, and, you know, the VFA will help to, to project things that might come up over the next five years, but there are always things that we're surprised by, that's just the reality of it.
Are you willing to earmark $1.3 million a year into a deferred maintenance account for a $90 million project? Like, that's what you would do?
Right, and the, the question is, how do you fund that, right? Because you would need to do that for every building, same thing for the high school, same thing for the turf fields.
Yeah, if we wanted to do that, that's the, the sort of pain that we would have to go through to get us on a better track.
So, Jeff, are you suggesting that it's part of this process that happened? Because if you wait to change, then it's another three to five years.
Yeah, I think if, if you don't make it conditional, you run that risk of, all right, solve the problem now, we're here next year, okay, everything's okay, three to five years, we're talking about another major override.
Right.
So, I, I, Jeff speaking, not FinCon speaking.
I'm not, I'm telling you.
Yeah, I would love to say, like, this is the strategy, like, solve it now, this is how we solve it in the future with a better process.
So, that $100,000 deferred maintenance is, needs to be multiplied by at least 10.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, are we willing to do that? That solves the problem in 20 years, or could help the problem in 20 years, when we're no longer here.
Effectively, the capitals, the stabilization funds are the deferred maintenance accounts that you're speaking about, so, you know, the solution...
But is earmarking it? But is earmarking it? Is that what Jeff's saying?
No, it, it, it's not just, it's not just going to be Lynch, it's also going to be the fact that we have an ongoing problem, that we have to replace vehicles across DPW and fire and, and everything else. So, you're putting it into a general fund to have yourself some sort of flexibility, whether it's the building fund or, or the capital fund. But when we went through the last override process, we, we, capital came in and said, really, we need $4 million. We ended up with $2 million.
No, it was 1, 1.9. 1.1, 1.1.
Yeah, right, after, after...
Right, that was a long process.
Yeah, so, but we know where we need to get to. We could get to a point where these funds could take on a $3 million project occasionally, but we're not going to get there with the way that they're structured right now. We just aren't.
I think this plan that, at the request of the select board and town management that we came up with, was a $40 million plus or minus request. The real question is, and that would be any, basically any project over a million dollars, that would give us a three to five-year window to get caught up on, quote, capital items, and then we could, like Roger said, look at bigger projects. One thing you're not addressing here is free cash. And unfortunately, this community has established a policy that we use free cash for ongoing expenses. Jeff, to your question, if we could control free, free cash and we use it for one-time expenses, not for operating budget, you'd have a substantial backlog of available funds for one-time expenses. Another thing you have to realize is, we were very fortunate, based upon staff's input and hard work, to get a AAA bond rating on the last go-around. That AAA bond rating, thank you, everybody, that AAA bond rating is very conditional, and one of the key factors they have is reserves. And as this budget grows, we're not really addressing the reserve issue. Reserve issue is, for lack of a previous policy, it was 12, 10 to, 6 to 12 percent, 6 to 10 percent. Now, it's more realistic on being asked 12 to 14 percent?
Yeah, I mean, they threw around 8 to 12, 10 to 14.
It's a fundamental problem that we're not going to solve with one override, is that we're not going to solve that with one pro, one planning process. But last year, FinCon did a great job, they held the budget to very minimal free cash expenditure. And we can then budget, if we can budget, the operating budget within our means, that addresses an awful lot, not a lot, that addresses some of your questions about, quote, reserves and one-time expenses. So, this is something the board has to do, work with the school committee, and work with everybody, FinCon, a little less than, not much with capital, and allow the process as planned to work. I mean, there's a process out there, if we followed it, probably would work very well. We don't have to recreate the wheel, and we might have to put new tires on it, but we don't have to recreate the wheel.
Yeah, I think, I agree with you. I know we were under review for our AAA bond rating, has that been reaffirmed?
Yes.
Yes.
That happens every time.
When we go out to market in, you know, from, in March, we'll have another review. But it was, the rating review is because they changed how they, their rating kind of process, which is why we...
Yeah, no, the debt to revenue ratio, I think, went up 15 percent, so they're looking at debt a lot more now. But, yeah, I agree with you, I, I think the VFA data and that investment can help this whole process, and, George.
Yeah, so, Jeff, if I, if I hear you, and I, we've had these conversations before, but when we look at the VFA, it's going to spit out some number, and it's going to say, you know, you need to be saving, you know, setting aside, let's say, $6 million a year, you know, for all these repairs coming through. The question is, how do we fund that, right? And, you know, that's, I don't think it's a question of us or anybody in this room or, or previous boards not wanting to do it, it's, the problem is, you know, where do you come up with the funds? I mean, we don't, you know, we run lean to begin with. You know, costs are increasing, especially on the school side, you know, special ed costs, things like that. So, where do we, where are we going to get that money? I think everybody would strive and, you know, do it this way, and wants to do it this way, but, you know, we're in a hole, and from a capital standpoint, we're building schools, and, you know, what do we do at this point? I think that's the question. And so, you know, at our table, we've been wrestling with, you know, an override, and And so, you know, at our table, we've been wrestling with, you know, an override and the numbers changed, you know? And I think John and Michelle will present on this on Monday. Um, and, you know, hearing Michelle, you know, it sounds like there might be some other options, maybe, um, to, to kind of fund this stuff. But then I hear Jimmy and Roger say, well, you know, that's not the best use of those funds. Uh, so where, where do we go, guys? I guess is my point. I mean, we've got a...
I'm actually hearing three things, not just funding. I'm hearing different management strategy of how we prioritize and identify projects.
Yep.
I'm hearing a different funding strategy, maybe than even what's presented here, of how we get the projects done while also managing not to get the operating side of our budget. Because we can't talk about this in isolation of operating the town and schools. And I'm also hearing that we need a different, um, strategy to prioritize these things. Like, how do we balance operating and capital and then capital projects within that?
So we haven't, so we really haven't even talked about, at least on the operations side, and Beth, I don't know if you're going to get into this, but, um, you know, certainly, you know, we saw those outlier numbers coming down the road. I don't know if management has any thoughts on, I mean, we're going to need an operating override at some point.
Well, that's what I, that's what I'm saying. I don't think you can talk about anything in isolation.
Yeah, but I guess that my, my point is, we've been, at least where I sit, everything you're hearing today is nothing new. I've heard the same story for three years since I've sat on this board. And, and the numbers, and the numbers get tweaked here and there, and they change a little bit. But ultimately, the same conversation happens every year, and we're not doing anything about it. We're not taking any action.
Well, right, but if the only option is an override to what Jeff was saying, and we do nothing to change those other things that everybody has identified as common values, beliefs about this, then we're always going to be doing it for the next thirty years.
Right, and I think, wait, I mean, at least in the last presentation we had at our table, um, you know, town management looked at long-term, you know, identified longer-term strategies in addition to the override. Um, and I think that's, we have to do it. And, you know, we invested in VFA as a starting point in order to do that and figure it out. Um, but, um, if we just sit and we wait and we continue to talk, I think, you know, costs go up, new projects are identified, you know, Mr. Keating is a, a perfect example. You know, maybe it was a five, you know, two years ago or whatever, uh, and today it's a one. I mean, based on what, you know, the emails I see from Pete Lawson. So, you know, things are going to happen, things are going to break. I mean, you know, we build these brand-new buildings, you know, they're all computerized. Computers, you know, your own houses, right? Your dishwasher lasts five years, your washing machine lasts maybe six. You know, they don't build it like they used to. So new things are going to be identified, and what we're trying to do with the VFA is identify those and put, and if we can, develop a strategy to put money aside to do it. But we got to figure out, one, where we get that money, and that's, that's a question, you're right, Michelle, that we need to, you know, answer, uh, in part with this. Now, does that mean we put off one for the other? I'm not sure. Um, but I think, you know, as long as they're happening in parallel, and I know I've sat in the conversations for the better part of, you know, fifteen months now, um, you know, with the VFA presentations and, and with FinCom and trying to figure out how we do this. But, you know, we have to start somewhere, or the hole just gets bigger and bigger and bigger.
So one thing I mentioned when I talked with John yesterday and Beth and Mark is, and this is like, you're going to love this, Jeff, for FinCom. I'm not, it doesn't solve the current problem, and Jeff, there are certainly some pain points on that list, right? So I think we've heard from Pete, we've heard from others. These aren't, the, the, the top of the line isn't a bunch of wants. We could debate a couple of them as wants. There's definitely some needs. But to the longer point of how do we, where do we find the money for deferred maintenance? Where do we find the money to use and, and sort of seed the building stabilization funds long-term? In 2027, we're going to have our pension obligation paid off. We just voted a policy to start to then fund OPEB. I think we ought to revisit that policy, not to not fund OPEB, but to direct some of what we were doing on annual contributory retirement into our capital needs. Now, that puts us two and a half years out, which doesn't solve for today. But the longer-term strategy, so we've been able, I mean, when I was on FinCom ten years ago, I didn't think we'd ever fund our pension. But we actually have light at the end of the tunnel, investment earnings that are helping close that gap, and we're growing our OPEB fund more than three fifty, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We're actually earning investment income toward OPEB. So John looked at me yesterday, he's like, are you really talking about, like, rating OPEB? As I was all over OPEB on FinCom, right, because he's dying too. But I think, like, I don't have a solution. I'm not sure where I am on this override. We'll talk about it on Monday. But the idea that putting some discipline behind it, putting cash for some deferred maintenance or putting money into capital, I think we have, if we don't, if we actually commit to taking what we had as long-term obligations, we funded our pension. We've been putting four to six million a year, four to seven million a year, and the audit sort of, you know, where it's that four to five million dollars range that we've been putting toward pension. If we carved off thirty percent, a third of it to capital, and we could decide, does it go to building stabilization equally? And we put two-thirds of what's been an annual obligation of pension debt, put two-thirds to OPEB debt, put one-third to capital. We have, or, and, and we commit to it, we have a recurring funding source. And then we can debate which bucket it goes into. Does it go to deferred maintenance account? Does it go to bonding? Does it go to, because it probably shouldn't go to vehicle acquisition, right? Like, if we're talking about long-term, it's not about buying a truck, uh, you know, buying a thing, buying a furnace. But, and so I don't know that that's, that's not it today, but I think, and I'm not sure I'll be on the board in 2027, but I think we ought to look at, we actually have a little bit of light at the end of that tunnel and potentially money that it's a long-term obligation to pay our retirees. It's a long-term obligation to pay our health insurance for our retirees. Certainly a long-term obligation to maintain our buildings. And not for the Big Bang New School, not for the next Morocco. But it's really, the maintenance on the next Morocco or the maintenance on this building. So, so like, I, you know, however this all plays out, I might have a select board, let's look at that OPEB and thanks, Beth, for sending it, take a little line and like, add a new bullet to that, that thing. I'm not saying we don't fund OPEB, but I think maybe we redirect some money.
Yeah, that will definitely change the OPEB liability from one twenty to one fifty or one eighty because they've relied on that money coming in to calculate it. But on this, on a side note, um, I forget who mentioned it, and capital. If we were to fund that big twenty-six million dollar problem now with the debt exclusion, would these, would these accounts be a pocket for deferred maintenance? Is that the intent?
Deferred maintenance, uh, uh, no.
Because it's seven and a half million-ish.
No, it's a capital project. The reason a lot of these projects come to capital is because there isn't any ma, there isn't sufficient funds in the maintenance budget. So, I mean, you take, um, anything up there, if there had been deferred maintenance in it. I mean, take the, the new school building program, which is now getting up to twenty-five years old. All those buildings, we're seeing it in Lynch, you know? We're seeing it in McCall.
So we're not building enough in our operating budget every year for the maintenance, so that's what you're asking for.
Sufficient money to maintain the buildings and let them deteriorate. If you go back to Lance Grenzabek's, um, hundred thousand dollar maintenance fund or whatever it is, that has substantially changed the life of some capital projects that have reduced, that have stopped them from becoming capital projects. It's been deferred because they've maintained them. So, um, this is, this...
I, I think that's true, but if you look at those projects that are in green there, right? None of those are on that list because of, we haven't maintained those, right? Those, those are on the list because we are at the end of our useful life, right?
They're at the end of their useful life.
Right.
That's what we're saying. I'm not saying you could, if you had maintenance, maybe extend the useful life on existing project. But we're, we're going into another subject. And I'd like, you know, I think we should sort of bring it back. There's about forty million dollars in requests there of projects that are unfundable by the capital's committee right now. And that we had requested approximately forty million dollars to get caught up on major capital projects. There's the list. You can look at it, you can agree with it, you can disagree with it. You can amend it, you can add, you can minus, whatever you want to do. But the number basically is, this is what we need to get up, to get caught up in major capital projects. Going forward, um, we know we can do million-dollar projects, on any million-dollar project. You know, we'll reevaluate it in two, in year two or three or four, as to can we fund something else? But this at least gets us caught up. This is something we've had from before the millennium that has just been compounding, compounding, compounding. We rebuilt school buildings, we've done a lot of capital projects, working with overrides, working with, um, town staff and working within the capital stabilization account, whether we did the right thing or the wrong thing. We got them done, and that's the most important thing. We want to get this stuff done. This is, in my opinion, the answer of getting it done, getting it caught up. And amend it any way you want, because it's all opinions. Because we have another meeting in a year from now, or two years from now, there'll be different opinions of what we could have done, what we should have done. But we'll know if this is successful. It's something we've done.
Can I ask a question?
No.
I knew you were going to say that. Never let me talk.
Poor thing.
Ken, um, in rough percentage states, you or Beth or anyone, what's our year-over-year revenue growth? Just like taxes, funding from state, just...
If you carve out the debt exclusions that are volatile, um, it's two and a half-ish. It's really not more than that, yeah.
So every year?
Our main source of revenue is a two and a half percent. It might be two point eight because new growth might come in.
Right, right.
Um, but it's no more than really three percent.
So not, not to, you know, take an obvious point, but really to Rich's point, okay? We're not printing money.
Right.
We have no real hope for growing our revenue at any accelerated pace beyond two point eight. And I appreciate that we need to talk about the expenditure side, but we can't gut town and school services to get to the answer of trying to deal with this ongoing, very real problem that we've got to find, that we've got to find a solution for. So I just, you know, in this discussion, I want to remind everybody that, like, we can't control town side, school side, some of the things that we have to budget for. We don't, you don't control health insurance, other than you did a great job getting a new company and, you know, making those kinds of choices along the way. But name me a place where the actual inflationary growth, uh, in any sector has not outpaced two point eight percent. I mean, it's not realistic, in my view, to say, well, we're just going to continue to hammer on, you know, bringing everybody in, operating budget at two percent, when in fact, every single year, we had a fourteen percent growth in our added district placement costs this year. No control over it, it's set by the operation division services or whatever that group. We had to fund that. We don't control when we have a student come in with significant needs that may cost three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars a year, okay? I mean, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars a year is a pretty big percentage of our overall total budget. So we can't, I just want to make, I got, I'm setting my own expectations, I guess, around, as we go into these budgets. I, I don't know, I don't have a sense of what kind of longer-term plan is for dealing with that revenue piece. And I think that's what we're all talking about, but it can't, it, in my view, only be a conversation about trying to reduce expenditures to, to deal with it. Because it's, it's just not there, and we're not, we just don't have the new growth that some other communities have. So, thank you.
And I, I think to your, to your point, Frank...
It's a question at the beginning. I kind of worked it into a statement.
When the override was passed in two thousand and eighteen, I think the thought was like it was going to last three years, right? So we've stretched it, and I think last year, we said we could get through twenty-five. But as you see, you know, a few slides back, as you get out to twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it, that number gets bigger, right? And, um, if we're not going to be looking at an operating override in twenty-six, which would be basically a year from now, or we'd be going to the voter for an operating override, we need to keep as much free cash in our pocket to close that gap. But the problem is, at some point, we have to go to voters, and when that gap is so big and if that override fails, those cuts are deep if you have to come back. So that's got to be part of the discussion as well.
They're deep, and there's only a certain percentage of the town budget and the school department budget that you can even apply those cuts to, right?
Yeah, sometimes you have to, some things you can't cut.
It's like, everything's not on the table to cut, right?
So one thing I was, I know we're trying to leave at ten-thirty, right, is our end time-ish? At least that was the invite, I think, sir, or what I saw on the calendar.
I'm here all day.
We have lunch coming, come on.
We're going to solve every issue today.
Apparently, this is your meeting, so go ahead. It'll be a steel cage match at the end of this.
Break it, I'm going to arm wrestle him, live TV.
What I wanted to say is, is I thought on the town calendar it was nine to ten-thirty, so it's beginning. But I will leave at eleven. What I wanted to say is, with, if, however many time we have left, Beth has at least a couple more slides on retiring debt and certainly one on CPA, which I think is relevant to this discussion. If there's a, the CPA committee of my peers trying to put a November ballot question on, which might, again, doesn't solve our capital problem, doesn't let us borrow, you know, thirty million dollars.
It adds more revenue.
It adds revenue, and it might pay for some of the, you know, second-page capital stabilization playgrounds and public space. So I want to just make sure we give ourselves some time for that before eleven.
Um...
With that?
With that.
It does say ten-thirty somewhere.
Um, so one of the things we put together with our financial advisors was just the existing debt, right? So what you see here is the debt exclusion, which, um, you know, we really have a ways to go before we see any significant drop-off in those numbers. Um, and then this is the proposed debt. So this is, it's actually, some of it's existing. So we did borrow twenty-nine million dollars last month, last March for Lynch. So this blue is the existing Lynch debt. And then we have another probably forty-two million that we'll be borrowing before, you know, before we're done for that project. Um, we also included here the South Reservoir Dam project, so we've estimated that project around six million dollars. Um, eighty-six point four or five percent, even though it's a water and sewer debt under chapter one-ten, eighty-six point four or five percent of that, any water and sewer debt gets transferred over to the tax rate, so...
It's like a debt exclusion.
Yeah, so we have, you know, South Reservoir Dam that will be coming at us, and we have a very small vector truck, uh, impact that will be coming at us from the water and sewer. And then Morocco Culvert, so that was a debt exclusion that was in spring twenty-twenty-one, I believe. Uh, we went back to town meeting this year to increase that amount. We expect to be issuing the bands for that project this March and probably permanently borrow, um, by March twenty-twenty-six. Um, and then some of the conversations we have, we've had is about retiring debt. So there was a, a previous policy, um, that when there was debt retired out of the general fund, it would be transferred over to the capital stabilization fund. When the override went through in twenty, two thousand and nineteen, that, that kind of practice went away. And so one of the questions the board had was, what if we were to reinstate that? So, um, in twenty-five, it's very modest, three thousand dollars that we could transfer over to the stabilization funds. It does obviously, you know, get larger with time, but, um, that's kind of where we are with that. I don't know if you had any questions, Michelle or John, on that one?
I think that's just a policy that select board needs to vote potentially, or at least revisit. And if we, because that's how capital didn't get two million dollars in the last override. It's how they got less than two million dollars, the retiring debt didn't come back. So if we want to put that back in as a practice, we need to sort of formalize that. Because I, I wasn't aware when I joined the board that we hadn't been doing that. So it's very modest. It doesn't do, doesn't give us much, you know, for ten years, like, hundreds of thousands. Um, but if it's something that we could, it's another source of capital in, in modest amounts that isn't, to Frank's point, isn't going to necessarily be the, the difference between three school or municipal positions in any given year. It's not necessarily going to save, um, you know, a huge operating impact. I think we ought to think about that as a board, and I think we ought to think about that as a board this spring so that we actually can retire debt at the end of this fiscal year and put the whopping three thousand one hundred and fifty...
No, but I think it is important, if, from a plan, like the five-year plan, these are all pieces that add together into a strategy. So with OPEB, you say, oh, that rolls off, writes into capital. This rolls off, comes into capital. Like, just seeing that on a piece of paper, like, all of it, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll actually stand behind my words there, Jeff, as we're...
That money may be better off in maintenance.
Oh, I mean, sure.
I mean, I think the discussion is to, to really have a discussion.
But at least make it available to capital. I think we can get really specific, Jim and Roger, about where. But I think putting that back...
I'm saying the operating budget is aligned in the, in the TM's operating budget for maintenance.
But then it doesn't roll, so having it in a separate fund, it, like, doesn't close to free cash.
Like that maintenance going.
Yeah, that's not in the operating budget. That's like a deferred, that gets sent out to another account.
Into another account, yeah, but something like that.
Anyway, so thank you, Beth, and, and I think it was Mark who sort of, you know, clued me into the fact that we weren't doing this. So I think we just, it, yeah, but Jeff, to your point, it's, it's part of a plan. I think we just need to sort of, let's get serious about turning some of those faucets. Well, they're trickles of money. Let's at least get them opened again.
The problem that we had with, with, um, retiring debt, and I know Jim, you and, uh, was it Lance, that worked on putting it together just to get any money into capital, was that every time anybody wanted to accomplish anything in the town, whether it was like, we need a new dog walking area, or we need to add a, a classroom onto a school, is they said, well, how are we going to fund it? Well, we... Well, we could take back retiring debt. And that always came up.
Take it back.
And the one thing that we did accomplish, beyond getting a little bit more money into capital, was we eliminated retiring debt, and we eliminated that threat to the annual process of capital. Because we got a secure source of funds, and that, that's not a small thing.
So if we make it not ratable?
I don't know how you do it.
Well, it goes into defer maintenance potentially. But I think we can, we should talk more about it before we take any position as a board, but we should talk more about it.
Is it, Stacy, is it possible to, sort of to that point, get us a list of like, what are these available funds that are not?
With the deferred maintenance accounts?
Deferred maintenance, are there other, just other things that we can see what those are?
I think almost all of it now. We maybe have 40,000, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's a request pending.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, we've done, we've done a good job lashing it out recently.
A hundred grand doesn't stretch very far.
A hundred thousand doesn't go very far.
Because it's not just buildings, it's cars, it's all sorts of stuff.
But just having a, an understanding of like, we have things that would be line items in the operating budget, but then we have different accounts and how we can also appropriate into, like, different existing accounts versus.
There's not many. I'll let you know.
So it might be a really quick shortlist.
Yeah, it's very short.
So in terms of ARPA funds, you know, we started with 6.8, we have committed about 3.5. We've set aside somewhere around 1.8 for either potential community needs or other projects that we kind of have in development. And so we have somewhere around 4.1, 1.4 left. We have some projects that will be wrapping up that we hope to have some closeouts, so that number should go up every penny. I think we rescinded $10 last time.
Spend this now, come on.
Yeah, this money has to be committed in, by December, which means we have to have, if it's a project, we have to have a signed contract.
And we know we're gonna spend all of it, because we can't change it after December 31st, '24.
What about revisions?
No.
Does it go back?
It will go back. If we don't spend it, like, if we don't, if we're not 100% sure that we're gonna spend any contract that's in place, then it will have to go back. We can't reallocate it.
Yeah, to the feds, yep.
Rich or Beth, I have a question. The threshold for ARPA is it has to be committed by December of '24?
Yes.
Is that right? And then as a practical matter, does that just mean a select board vote?
No, contract in place.
Contract in place.
That we are going to spend it all.
Converged, committed.
So contract execution, but not project completion?
Correct.
It has to be complete by December 26.
All paid for by December 26. But the worry I have is we have a million-dollar contract, and it's, we don't finish, we don't actually need a million dollars. We only needed $980,000, so we gotta pay that 20 grand back. So it's gonna be for stuff we know we're going to absolutely spend.
You need a $1.6 million job?
Yes.
That we just supplement with capital stabilization fund or something like that.
Yeah, something, and we'll spend the ARPA money first.
Something like that.
Certainly shoot higher, Roger.
Yes, 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 in like.
You're saying, Roger, if you like, put 80% ARPA funding towards something, you planned on supplementing just in case it came up?
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing that we've talked about is CPA, and I took this from the working group. Yeah, information that was put together. So the projection that that group put together is if there was a 1.5% surcharge in year one, we'd get somewhere around 1.5 million, assumes exemptions for low income, first $100,000 off residential, and then exempting all commercial and industrial properties. That money, if it's, if we vote in November 2024, that money would be available in spring, Stacy, correct me if I'm wrong, spring '25 for appropriation for use in FY '26.
Voted in '24, it could be used for FY '26.
Yep.
Not the, not the match, but a surcharge.
So the match, the match would come in FY '27.
Yeah.
And based on the historical information, I think the group thought that we could have a 20% match, which would be about $300,000. And then this was the projected tax impacts at the 1.5% surcharge. So our, in FY '24, the average single-family home value is around $1.5 million. So that would be about a $236, $236 impact on taxes. So Mark and I, working with our financial advisors, tried to kind of put together this estimated future tax impact based on the three things that we know are coming. Lynch School, obviously, some of that has been permanently borrowed. This timeline kind of outlines kind of where we are, what was permanently borrowed. And I know the estimated cost is maybe a little bit of a moving target with the MSBA reimbursement, but I think we're somewhere in this range. Chris, on the Lynch 2025 website, you had the estimated tax impact at $54 per $100,000 of assessed value. So I just took that information, which, based on the $1.5 million current assessment for the average single-family home, would be about an $810 a year impact on taxes.
And obviously, that was based on what rate, that's on, what rates were when we did that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, everything's, it's a moving target, right?
It's always squishy. I think that, those are good numbers.
Yeah, you know, whether it's 790 or 810, it's somewhere in that range. Morocco Culvert, you know, we're estimating the cost at 10.2, but we had some.
9, 7, 5, 4, 5.
The maximum bar, we had some unexpected bond proceeds that we, that we put. So the maximum borrowing we have is the 9.7, a very exact number. We're estimating, you know, about a, per $100,000 of assessed value, it's a $6.50 impact. So somewhere maybe around $100. Obviously, this average single-family home number is a moving target. By the time we permanently borrow in March 26th, that'll be a different number. South Reservoir Dam, as I mentioned, 86.45% of that is shifted over to the tax rate. So, you know, maybe somewhere around, that project cost is still very much an estimate. Hopefully, it will go down from the $6 million, but if it was around $6 million, it'd be somewhere around a $60 impact. And then the CPA surcharge that I just mentioned, at the 1.5, would be a $236 impact.
And are we assuming Lynch in a 25-year term as well? So the top three are all 25, or is there any different borrowing term that we're assuming for Lynch?
I thought Lisa put it out at 30, but I don't know, I can't recall.
Which one? Borrowing term for Lynch is a 25 or 30?
I think we did assume 30.
I think it's.
Yeah, it was 30.
Okay.
By the way, just in terms of, Jeff, you earlier pointed out projecting maintenance on the buildings. So there's project costs and construction costs, our actual Lynch construction cost, $68 million. So that may bring your number down a little bit. So that 90, that's like, that's abatement demolition, swing spades, you know, consultancies and so forth.
So with that, yeah, 1.5% of that would be, should be here, Mark?
Yeah.
I do have a question, just on ARPA, now we have a million and a half. What's just stopping in this select board from saying, let's just use that to build, replace a roof?
Nothing.
And to Rich, to your point, something we can do, like, that's a million and a half right there, and then knock off that project.
Correct, nothing's stopping us.
Nothing's stopping us.
So on Beth's previous slide.
Tune in Monday.
Put that in a memo.
Nothing's stopping us but ourselves.
And then, just the last slide I had, John, I think, had asked us to put together if we were to do a debt exclusion for capital. And Stacy made a good point the other day that it's not a capital override, because it's not additional funds every year going to stabilization fund, it's a debt exclusion project to pay for capital projects. So trying to be very careful in my language. But, you know, we ran numbers from $20 million to $35 million, and looking at what the potential tax impact would be on an average single-family home. Again, this assumes for the capital debt exclusion, a 20-year term at, and we use the 3.75%. That's kind of where Hilltop is, is running their most recent numbers. Obviously, that, you know, can change depending on if and when we go out to borrow, so.
And Beth, on the previous slide, I'd be remiss if I didn't remind people that the master plan has us going forward with Morocco in '25 to '28. So when we're looking at those 25 to 28 numbers, theoretically, there will, you know, be a school project in the pipeline.
If you go back to this, it looks like your total debt service goes down by about $3 million in '27? Is that, do I, am I reading that right? Your, your.
The yellow category?
No, in total. That your total debt service goes down, I, I think it's about $3 million, is that right? So, and then we go up by the amount that you were just showing, so in terms of debt service. So there's a bit of an offset there, isn't there?
Right, but there's, obviously, there's different, there's different sources, right? So all of the, the capital and the, and the building stabilization don't have a direct impact on the tax bill, because those are kind of funded within themselves, right? It's, it's just the water and sewer debt and the debt exclusion that are, is transferred directly over to the tax rate. So that's kind of the distinction, I think.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. So even though there might be some reduction in the building stabilization fund, some of that debt will go away, and it's available to fund project, it doesn't impact.
Right, but your.
People's bottom line.
Yeah, I got it.
To Michelle's point, before we build another school, I think we really gotta solve, to Jeff's point, you know, all these problems.
Actually, my point was the opposite, Rich, that we have to consider the tax impact for another school.
That's how I know.
For all tax impact.
Add another $700 to $800 to your tax bill?
Right.
In the next five years, before 2030.
Right.
For the Morocco, whether that's bands for a couple of years.
Squeezing an operating override in there.
Or that just goes back to not doing all of this for so long, it's now all coming to a head at the same time.
So. Sometimes I feel like about a condo and a condo association that hadn't done an assessment for like a generation when I bought my house.
That's exactly what I, how I relate to it.
Right, but to Jimmy's point, like, we did, which isn't a knock on, you know, flood mitigation for the town was a huge investment. We spent hundreds of millions of dollars. I moved here when brand-new Ambrose came online.
Yeah.
We've done two McColl additions, we've done a VO, and.
High school.
And a high school, and we're about to do a Lynch. So it's, yes, we haven't solved this problem, but it's not as if we haven't spent hundreds of millions of dollars in capital. And flood mitigation, I remember 2006, you know, water three inches in my basement. 2010, with the US Geological Survey taking water samples right outside my office, because like, the water was about to flood over the Mount Vernon Street Bridge, so.
Not too much traffic, probably.
Not too much traffic, but like, you know, the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot would routinely flood 10, 15 years ago. So I think we, to, Rich is right, we haven't, we don't have a plan for this, and we haven't solved for these projects, and they're all waiting for us, whether we do an override now, or later, or not, not that we wouldn't do it never. But I think we ought to just, you know, pat ourselves on the back. I guess.
To live with the results.
Not really, but like, we should pat ourselves on the back for, you know, you'd say, was it right or was it wrong to spend it here or there? But I think flood mitigation has had tremendous benefit for everybody in this town. Not just like, not to mention this building, which we couldn't have FinCon meetings, because it was, it's like fish in the basement. Just say that, it's, but it still feels like, yeah, but it still feels like, gosh, what were we doing before I moved here with our money? Oh, well, here we are.
I think we have to be careful how we message this to the community as well, right? As Michelle was saying, to say that we've not done anything is just not factually accurate. I mean, so independent of school projects, we've done a lot of bridge work, we've done certainly a lot of maintenance through town. So I certainly have been sitting in town meeting for the last 10 years and have voted a lot of free cash transfers, a lot of capital projects being pushed forward. So I think we are where a lot of communities are that are experiencing school growth and, you know, construction projects where we've, we have put that tax burden on residents, so we haven't had the luxury of other things. But when we had the override a couple of years ago for the Morocco Culvert, we added on a little bit to the life extension program at Morocco. So I think we just need to be strategic, and we need to continue to convey to residents that, that we have a plan. This is what we talked about in 2019 with the general override. We said, we're going to need this, you know, at every few years, right? If, at this level, right? So for capital and for operating, because of our lack of commercial revenue, right? So if everybody wants to continue to rely on residential revenue, which the town seems to want to do, then this is part of it, right? So they just would like to see us talk about a strategy and be positive about what we've done, and that nobody's made a mistake, nobody's neglected capital projects. A lot of these have just come on, you know, in the last several months, right? So they haven't been sitting for decades, and they haven't been sitting for years. So I think we just need to let people know that we manage a lot of buildings with limited funds, and the stabilization funds probably just need more yearly revenue, right? And the CPA is a part of that, certainly not the silver bullet. But, you know, I'm hoping we can get more back to strategic planning and not so much the sky is falling and, you know, everybody has, you know, neglected the town, because I think it really is, it's really disrespectful to residents that have been paying into overrides and increased taxes over the past several years. It's just my perspective. I think a great example of strategic planning is that, is that conversation. If we know we have Morocco coming down the pipe, what does that do to our debt? Do we need to spend $8 million on sidewalks now? And like, that conversation and dialogue to make sure that we're really laying out a clear plan for the next five years.
Can I offer as well, to put a timeline perspective on Morocco, particularly coming to see a chart like this, and that may be why Michelle mentioned it, although we don't know exactly what the new Morocco will cost and exactly when it will hit, it's gonna be on here, and we can actually be pretty reasonable about approximately when it will hit. For those around the table who aren't aware, the school committee will be discussing and voting this month on our intent to submit a statement of interest to the MSBA, January 25, jointly with the select board for the new Morocco. If it takes three swings at the plate, like it did the Lynch, then by the time we get an approval, that would mean going for a debt exclusion override sometime around 2028. And Jeff, by that point, a new Morocco would be $90 million, right? Because of just the cost of escalation. And to Mike's point, we have committed to a new Morocco in some measure between 2028 and 2030. Doesn't mean it's done and open, but it's either open or it's in progress. So approximately that kind of money is reasonable, and at approximately that point on the calendar, I think is important to start describing in some way. And to Mike's point, just so that part of the community knows that we're not paying it forward. Because I do, and Michelle gets that question a lot, it's why I mentioned it at town meeting. It could be one of the more popular pages on the Lynch website. What about Morocco?
And we could be accepted the first time we sit in the SLI, which is why keeping the 25 or 26 to 28 timeframe.
Nobody would have been happier than Frank Hackett, if that was as absolute as possible.
You gotta keep Frank busy.
I don't know, I'm not, that's true anymore. Was true until this meeting.
VFA is gonna help us with this, but then after we get done with Morocco, we're right back in the, we're back at the start of the Golden Gate Bridge again, because we're then probably gonna be looking at major renovation repairs to Lincoln. And at that point, after that, then Ambrose will be the oldest, and then we'll be back to VO, and it's just gonna be a cycle.
It's a circle.
And I think you communicate that very well, Roger, and we need to get that out to residents, that it is a cycle in buildings that we feel like we, we just built, you know, we didn't, you know? And so it's, it's just a continuous cycle, and where we are on it, the VFA is helpful, but the, the information, it only can go out so far. I know when we've used it in the past, it's like, looking out longer term than, I don't know, 10 years, eight or 10 years. It just is, the data is just, it's not, not helpful. It's like, you know, oh, this is gonna be 200 million, and you know it's not, it's just, it's what it is. So it'll be, it'll be helpful strategically for us, but we have to keep investing in it.
Michelle, I thought we should have ended with you and Mike, it was very positive. I felt like I was gonna be, you know, a little uplifting.
That's what I'm hearing from a cheerleader at Hart Frank, so, you know, I'll do what I can.
Beth, is there anything else you need for direction from?
Just, as we talked about, the new positions on the municipal side worth a conversation with the board.
Yep.
I'd just like to know when there's gonna be a decision and what amount of the override. I think what's very important, we get someone to champion it, and we can. So you need somebody, you need to know from the board, you know, when the date of the override, and how much is the question gonna be?
We have Michelle and John working through that, and we'll continue the discussion on Monday and see where we go.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth and Mark.
Thank you.
And Stacy, I know you guys did a ton. Motion to return. Oh, yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Rich is actually trying to take a vote.